Good evening, citizens, everyone. I'm the City of Mount Vernon, October 19th council meeting in order. Not aware of any changes that we have to the agenda in front of us.
I would like to approve the agenda, or three of the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody that would like to address the council? Do so now, unless it's on an item in the agenda. Tom, come forward, sir.
I'm going to make my final review of the two Tenth Avenue soft was. Just a couple of questions that I'd like to... Have we paid a lot of attention to our streets? The reason I'm asking that because Tenth Avenue and Palisades Road are trash. And they keep getting... The semis are even going around that way to go around the loop of it. I got a crack to start there this spring. It's gone up a half block this way, a half block this way, and it's about that wide. So, you know, do we have anything to take care of, something like that? I mean, I didn't think with a semi road anyhow, but there's more semis on there than there are cars right now. I think we need to pay attention because that's a pretty heavy shadow road and it's in pretty bad shape. Another question I have, you probably tell me this probably think it's crazy, but you probably haven't lived in experience with this that I have. What do we have in place if things go bad after the election? Do we have enough resources to take care of something? Should somebody decide to want to burn a house or destroy a car? I mean, what's our recourse? Just pile up the bodies and nothing? Say you take them up or what? I just want to make sure because it's, you know, things do happen. And if you've never been through a wrist lab or a guy like that, you're in one hell of a shock. Thank you.
Thank you. Kirsty, you want to throw in a question in terms of, I don't know if they can play it over.
Palisades is being reviewed. We are waiting for the finalization from the DOT as to the payout, and then we'll make recommendations to you. But Palisades at best would be a spring construction time period. So, Tenth will be crack sealed next spring. Typically, once the cracks warm, we just seal them, prevent water to go through them. And as far as the second part of that, you know, we have ample resources for events like that to a certain extent. If there's beyond chaos, then we're calling in other communities. So, we have a scenario in 2020 and able to contact people if need be, but I think we feel fairly comfortable about where we're at. We'll have extra staff that's already been discussed kind of nationwide. We'll have extra staff kind of on call.
I think it's a good question, by the same way you'd say never happened, but more than likely than be cool if they think otherwise. Anybody else that would like to address the council? All right. Next hour is introduction of public ordinance employees. Josh Moore and Matt Fox.
Yeah, I just wanted to get the names in front of you. So, they'll be starting here in the next week or so. And just in time, obviously. I was gonna say, just in time is their problem. I don't know what I said. That one I should have known, I guess.
How good. I know you had a lot of good candidates and what's the use for them? Anybody, any questions?
Josh Moore, local. I don't know him, I know Matt, but...
Iowa City.
Iowa City.
Anybody else? All right. Move on to the consent agenda. Approval of council minutes in the September 21st council meetings. Approval of liquor license for private people. And appoint Sabrina Grace to the Housing Commission.
I will move to approve the consent agenda and also that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any carries? Thank you to Sabrina Grace for volunteering her time for the Housing Commission. All right, next item is ordinance nine dash eight dash 2020B adopting chapter 49, mandated face coverings during public health emergencies. So, the law party is called code versus the third and final reading.
If you wanted to discuss it tonight, you'll have to remove from the table. You'll have to leave the table.
Yep, my bad. I'm going to take a motion to remove.
I'll make a motion to remove on table with the discussion topic.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any carries?
You were able to see our attorney's response. I've talked to a few of you about staff's position, but really like to say that the third and final response, I do believe this comes down to you, council decision on...
Yeah, I think we've talked about this quite a bit, so it won't only come down to whether or not what Mr. Patlow in his office had to say. But can you deny?
If you vote to move forward with it tonight, then we have to respond to the suit and proceed down that path. If it were to be voted down tonight, then the city attorney will just reach out to them and ask for this to be dismissed. But I think those are just kind of the paths that we'll lead depending on which direction the council wants to go.
I saw the bottom line opinion from our attorney, and I noticed that other organizations didn't really jump in on the bandwagon assistance here with ICAP, an insurance company, and also LIGA City, if I remember correctly. For me, it's a, you know, public health is a major issue, a part of our, you know, part of our purview. But as elected officials in this community, we also have the fiduciary responsibility. And I'm not sure... I mean, it's a tough decision, but right now, if it comes to this point, I'm going to weigh in on the fiduciary side and say, I'm not sure I want to go way ahead with this. Because that could be a rabbit hole, big time, on the fiduciary side. And I know I'm in the motion, it's like a reading or first reading or whatever it was, and I, you know, support the public health side, but which one carries more credence? In this one, I'm going to err on the side of fiduciary responsibility as elected officials. So, let me take some people off, and that's kind of where I'm at.
I understand and I respect your opinion on that, Tom. But my feeling has been, seeing the opinion and seeing the case against us, there isn't anything different than what we discussed previously when we talked about moving forward. So, I still feel it's for the moving forward.
I agree with you here because, I mean, it's funny that elected officials are so free to use the taxpayers' money when they make decisions. Yeah, I'd like to see if it was your money, 100% of your money, you were putting out on the line here, that you'd actually do this. But, oh, shoot, it's taxpayers' money. Let's just throw it out there. Get sued, lose some money. It's the taxpayers' money. I love that. I just love it. It's just, it's kind of sad that we as elected officials can do that and get away with it and not have any of our own skin in the game. Yeah, like I said, I'd like to really see if you guys had your money on it 100%, if you'd actually vote on this. That's where I stand. Use other people's money.
So, I appreciate your thoughts, Tom. And Eric, I would like to say that my opinion is in that path of mine. I do give grace that Tom is turning to the table because I too feel compelled on the fiduciary side. And I'll be frank with you, I am very torn because on the health side of things, there are some startling items that I think we are being made aware of every single day that this disease progresses. I will remind us all that the long-term effects are still unknown. Whether those be dental effects or whether those be physical effects. There is an unknown chart there. The thing that we do know is there are some mitigation strategies, which none of them is what we're voting on for ordinance. And the mitigation is simply a clock that covers share votes and covers her mouth. It's really not a hard thing to do. But unfortunately, in our environment, this is being completely politicized at this point in time. It should be an easy decision. And I am very, very, very disheartened by the inability of us to take the personal responsibility for each other. So, I remain somewhat torn, and I'm anxious to hear other comments.
I too am completely torn. I fully appreciate Tom's position. One of the biggest responsibilities that we have as city council members is, you know, overview of the city budget. And how we spend that money isn't something to take lightly because every dollar that is spent in one spot means it's a dollar that we can't spend somewhere else. To me, though, at the end of the day, we can fix as many streets as we want to, and we can, you know, do all sorts of other good things with public money. But if we don't protect the public health, I don't know what the rest of that is really for. And so, while I am disappointed that we are put in this position for any number of reasons, to me, the ultimate goal of protecting the health and the safety of the citizens of Mount Vernon hasn't changed. And I didn't read anything in our attorney's opinion to really push me off of that to say, if this goes, we're going to lose.
Ultimately, somebody else to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve ordinance nine dash eight dash 2020B adopting chapter 49, mandated face coverings during public health emergencies of the Mount Vernon municipal.
I'll second. Any comment? I'm sorry, I'll take it. This is a real tall.
Herman?
Yes.
Roda Bush?
No.
Rose?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Weasley?
If that the ordinance does pass, I will inform the council that we can't in good faith allow it to go through under its current circumstances. Any would have already been outlined or discussed in that week, so every, what, 14 days?
This is provided written to...
Did you guys do that? Ability to override? I mean, I hold heart and believe in everybody. Like I say, this is a league, definitely, in America, and now American property is still in effect. That's in my state. It breaks my heart as well that we even get to this point, quite honestly. We have a couple of individuals in our community that goes to bring this fight to us. Which it's obviously they're right, and that's, nobody's arguing with that, which is a very unfortunate situation. I think it's more than proven that the masks are a fantastic tool in this fight. But unfortunately, I just can't in good faith in there allow us to go lawsuit and do more damage than what's already been done, whether it's financial or however you want to categorize it. So, I'll make sure that the council receives that written explanation off all of it. And then obviously, you guys can take action after that as a process. I do thank everybody, so this has been extremely hard for everybody. Not only council, but obviously staff and many members of our community. We've all heard from, whether it's been the former organs. You know, this is, this is what we signed up for. So, the state, I mean, it's very easy to buy lease cars and refurbish upstairs, put new carpet in, and do all that stuff. But this is the stuff where it's really hard.
Well, I'd like to commend the members of our community, that, you know, very large portion of which are following social distancing guidelines. I've walked by some of the football games and seen people really trying to do the right thing.
And that's what does give me some sense. Because I have no pleasure at all in being focused by any means. I'm just hoping that everything that has been said in motion thus far, maybe they can get that to a little ready.
And I'd like to piggyback on what Steph just said and commend the businesses. Because in my mind, we can do all sorts of things. But at the end of the day, if businesses aren't enforcing the proclamation and the expected behavior, and we've all seen it. We've all seen businesses that choose to and businesses that don't. And I just want to commend those businesses that have decided to help take the lead on keeping everybody as safe as we can.
And I'd like to go one step further in that. It's true, and all of us, the housing season is right around the corner, right? And while those are glorious moments for family and for friends, they deliver these risks to all of us when we have those kinds of events. So, be smart, be cautious, you know, do what you can to practice the behaviors that we're trying to ensure that we don't want as we go forward.
Chris, from a procedural standpoint, is there anything else that needs to be added?
No. Obviously, you informed the council of your position. You provide written notice. And within 30 days, I believe it is, the council didn't attempt to take action that would require four of the five council members to vote to override the veto to approve. So, there, that's really a view. If I received those cases, then you believe that you have four votes and want to retain it on the agenda and override the veto, you just can't let them out. But if you can't get to the four votes, then you can stop there. Now, the one thing that I did say is the law, they didn't vote for resolution in ordinance, but hopefully, hopefully, the law...
Okay. Anybody else have any further comments, questions?
Well, I just want to say, you know, it really hit home for me recently because my son-in-law's uncle just died last week at the funeral in my friend. I already started to, you know, have family members, people close to me. He's 59 years old, has two high school sons.
Oh, he's not yet. It's very unfortunate. Anybody else? Any comments, anybody? Okay. We will move on to motions for approval for discussions consideration of claims list. And then, of course, on the claims list, I think it's good to know.
I do just have a question. Go ahead, Tom.
I'll second, and then she can do her second.
Okay. Just a question about Peggitt. On LBC furniture, it feels like that's coming so late. Was that, is there additional stuff or is that just a...
No, so, actually, that was...
Second payment.
Second payment. But it's invoice to the LBC, that's their original contract with the LBC. There's a second payment for City Hall.
Okay. That's what I wanted.
Yeah. We did the same thing, but LBC did not purchase anything additional to City Hall. It was just in their accounts. It was actually...
Does that make sense, Tom?
Yes, makes sense.
Oh, maybe you have a second?
Yes.
All in favor? Opposed? Any carries? Next item is discussion and consideration of sure removal, RFP, very short.
This is more just kind of FYI. Obviously, as we stated in my report, we have, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of 150-plus trees that still need to be removed due to safety concerns. We have the RFP report. We'll send this RFP out. Everybody is extremely busy, so hoping that we get these prices. We go through this process to verify to FEMA that we went through a public process, obviously, to get rid of the remaining trees. So, you'll actually vote on this once we get the RFPs back. I will have an opportunity to look at them and make sure that we're not getting gouged. Some of the trees, obviously, are in worse shape than others. You have half trees, I'll say. Some on those lifts are just hangers that you can't reach with your bucket. So, hopefully, you know, this is kind of the tail end of the very short event. Once we get the trees removed, we'll compare it on equity on tree replacement.
So, can I ask you a question? Is the RFP in the spirit of knowing what we can afford with FEMA funds or is it truly to execute it and go forward with the actual...
No, it's truly to execute it forward. So, one of the challenges that we do have with damaged trees in the right way is it's put at the city and our insurance company in an underm. We obviously know that they're damaged and pose a threat. Even though the cost associated with removal agrees, you know, we've just estimated internally to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000. We really don't have a significant choice moving forward. We don't have the equipment to not damage streets to take down that many trees. And it doesn't make a ton of sense to purchase all that equipment because hopefully, we wouldn't have a significant need moving forward with it. But going through the process obviously helps with the FEMA reimbursement, but the process itself is going to need to occur.
Thank you.
This might be micromanaging. This might be a question for Nick, but I think there was a citizen request form for some trees on a property that looks kind of like an alley, but is actually, I guess, a city street off of College Boulevard in Tenth. The board, are those trees part of this package or should they be?
They will be. So, the Arborist looked at specific right-of-way trees, and we have additional. So, we actually have some trees that are in our parks that aren't on the list itself that, once we get a per-tree cost or identify that the tree removal, this list is likely to expand. So, when you saw my email that said 150 to 200 plus, we really do have another 50, 60 trees that could potentially be part of this process. We also have the ash trees. A number of those ash trees are listed. FEMA may not reimburse for those. Some of them are damaged, but some of them are just because we know that we have the ash for here in town. And while we have somebody that is here taking out trees, it would make a lot of sense to take them out. We are spending about $25,000 every other year to try to inject, to save them with the goal to remove them incrementally. But now that we have this event and are going to have a contractor here, then I think at this point, it's just, we find a different way to move.
And you may have just answered my question, but I wanted, in the very first paragraph, it talks about the removal of 243 city street trees. But then, in the very next sentence, it talks about labor and equipment for safe and efficient removal of 168.
Yeah. So, just from a verbiage standpoint, those are hopefully our minimum acts.
Okay. Okay.
If we get much more than 243, it might be one of those situations where staff is sitting down going, okay, we can get some of the ash trees maybe later and get some of our bad trees down now.
Gotcha.
So, does FEMA ICANS cover any of the costs for replanting?
No.
Just hoping.
That will be, maybe, I guess, maybe in the situation in Cedar Rapids, but I highly doubt it. Most of what FEMA does do after the fact is find ways to help you mitigate future disasters. So, planting trees back would probably fly in the face of that. We'll utilize other grant opportunities that we utilize a lot in energy. I know Lynn County Conservation has some trees. The Arborist is going to work with us on expanding our tree list a little bit. He thinks our tree list right now is a little too tight. But, yeah, other than that, I would highly doubt it.
Okay.
When we do go to replace them, you might want to give the homeowners the option to like upgrade to larger tree. Like, you know, when they took those walnuts out for me, I decided to go to a bigger tree, two and a half inch. So, instead of 150, which the city normally pays, I paid 450, and I got a large tree there. And some people might want to do that, so.
Yeah, we do typically get the homeowner involved just because we need their help and people are alive, especially that number of trees. But we'll wait to see how many we're going to actually replace in a given year, how much money is going to be available. But, yeah, we, part of the reason that we've taxed and painted so that we could ease homeowners into the fact that more trees are still going to have to come down.
Any other questions? Kirsty, you leading the motion for this?
No, just recommendation that we'll be sending out.
Okay. Anybody else? Moving on to the next item, discussion and consideration of office furnishings in the police station. Keith?
Thank you. The items listed in the quote that you've received would be for the front office area for the administrative office person that we're looking to implement, and then right outside their door, which would be where we fingerprint the public who come in for background checks and different things like that. So, the furniture needed to equip that area for that. And I was happy to hear the conversation a few minutes ago about going directly to LBC. That works for me.
Thank you, Matt.
So, I have a question. Do we feel like Peggitt is giving us an appropriate discount?
So, they have, it is a federal program that we get to see their discounts. So, similar to when we buy a large piece of equipment for public works, we are allowed to use state and national bids. And this is since when we started with Peggitt. Yes. We've been happy with their customer service and the discounts that we receive to date.
Just wanted to double check.
Yeah, and kind of to piggyback off of that, when we went through a formal bid process, it wasn't so close with the other companies when we went to LBC.
Any other questions? I'm working with Dana Moulton on this furniture.
I approve of the quote from Peggitt for the police furnishings in the amount of $8,350.18.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any carries? Next item, discussion and consideration of administrative assistant position at this department.
Yeah, thank you. This position, we've been, as you know, we've been working on getting hired, and I've tried to send out a few updates during the hiring process to let you kind of know where we're at. I've intentionally kind of slow rolled it a little bit as well, trying to see what's going to happen with the Lisbon merger, different things like that. And so, we're kind of in the process right now finishing up the background checks of the top two candidates that we have interviewed and processed through that and have been... that, and have been trying to figure out what we're going to offer for pay packages, different things like that. In part of that process, long-term commitments and different things like that was, um, you know, we're kind of bouncing back. What I'm trying to avoid is hiring a person for thirty hours and then next month or two months from now, changing that position or vice versa, um, depending on the Lisbon process for that. And so, um, Chris and I have been brainstorming and, and met and discussed this pretty in-depth. We met with the Public Safety or Personnel Committee as well and discussed this position. Um, and I made the recommendation to Chris, if there's a way that we can make this a full-time, uh, forty-hour position. I don't doubt, especially at the beginning, I don't doubt that we have the work, um, available to meet the needs for that position additionally, um, in the long term. With the departure of Officer Mayler, and previously, the workload is, is definitely there, um, and the budgetary constraints of my budget would definitely fill that position for the short term, allowing us to process through another budget session and finish where things are at. And I think realistically, we're not a shrinking department. We're going to be a growing department. And so I think it's one of those, um, it's the time, and I think it's, it's a, to me, it's, it's one of those, if I can present that full-time pay package, um, I think we can get a lot better product for what we're looking for and be a competitive pay package from there. So that's my recommendation. Chris, I would be, any additional?
Um, no. So, obviously, uh, timing is important. Um, we're still not one hundred percent sure on the, the future of the Lisbon-Monfordan, um, combination, but, you know, all things so far are pointing in the right direction, and we believe that that's, um, you know, could potentially be decided by the, by the end of November by both city councils. And if, if that happens, that will be a good thing for, for both communities. But in the long term, um, we don't have a, a permanent part-time position in the city. Um, it's kind of the door that I've tried to, to keep closed. Obviously, with the LBC, it opens a lot of potential issues. Um, so, uh, when we started going through this process and, and looking at applications for this position, um, we had fully intended to offer this person, you know, thirty hours a week, twenty to thirty hours a week. Uh, and then potentially some minor benefits, whether or not that be like, except a, a permanent part-time position, or looking to go full-time as soon as Lisbon made a decision. But, um, once we've gone through this process, knowing that we could be having a conversation with this individual within a month, um, in talking with, with Doug, if Lisbon doesn't come forward, then it's likely that we're, we're sending somebody to kneecap. So we're going to be down an officer for anywhere from three to six months, depending on how long that whole thing goes. Um, that taxes the existing officers. Then it was, what do we do, um, with this position? And, and truthfully, um, we're looking strictly at benefits. So we earmarked the funds inside PD or the wages for essentially. So then it was coming up with, you know, anywhere from eight to fifteen thousand dollars, depending on the, the health insurance and where they fall out. And the decision that we kind of mutually came to was, um, if Lisbon comes across and we move forward as a, a joint venture, then this individual is strictly a PD employee and works on PD-related items. If they don't, this individual works for PD for eighty percent of the time, and the other twenty percent that they're looking for other departments and other funds can come into the mix. So I feel fairly confident that we can make this work as a full-time position, no matter what. It's just that, is it a hundred percent PD, or is it eighty percent PD? Um, ambulance, fires, public work, all have needs, you know, at various levels that those accounts could help fund this position. So, um, I think ultimately, weighing our options, it makes the most sense just to go ahead and hire this as a full-time position if the individual that, you know, we would like, and knowing full well that, that's a, this is turning up with our neighbors, so.
Well, not just our neighbors, but our community. Me, to Doug's point, this is the trajectory that the, that the department is on with the development, you know, over by Elliot's and with the residential considering the bypass. And I mean, I just, so, I like that there's a plan regardless, you know, if Lisbon's in it, if not, so.
Keith, do we know if either one of you talked to candidates, if it's not in the time, they remove themselves from the hiring process, or?
I think there's some question about the, what the total pay package is from that standpoint. So I think we run the risk of losing some of that. Um, both of them knew, you know, I've, I've been very upfront with all the candidates, that there was something that we had initially, we advertised the position as part-time, possibly full-time. Then I intentionally kind of slowed hold it a little bit, trying to give some time to see how things were developed from that standpoint. Um, so I don't, I don't know that either one of them would be out. I think there's some, definitely some key components that we would need to provide, um, as they build drills, so.
Chris answered my question. I was, I was just wondering if, you know, in the short term, if we could make up slack by doing more for other departments, and so I feel better about that. I also think that in terms of getting an employee, in terms of longevity, a full-time position is probably going to be better for that, for holding someone longer.
Does it help interns?
Yeah.
Well, part of, and part of the question, I mean, we've been in discussions with Lisbon too, with, you know, the cancellation of the agreement and different things from there, what that timeline looks like and stuff like that. So I also don't want this position to be based upon if, where we're at with Lisbon from that standpoint. I think the person, they're making life-changing decisions to come work for us, and I want to make sure that we have that position in a solid position from that standpoint. Um, I think he deserves that as well.
Basically, you're looking for both, Chris, and then Chris?
A full-time. We, we approve this as a permanent part-time position, uh, which determines and allows us to be a full-time position. Um, now, then it goes one of two ways. It's either funded out of the general fund as part of a combination of Lisbon-Monfordan Police Department, or it's funded probably close to eighty percent out of general fund under the PD's budget, and then the remainder, twenty percent will be allocated from other budgets.
Tom, you have a question?
I was just going to make a motion to approve the recommendation by Chief Shannon on the administrative assistant position for the Police Department, basically from part-time to full-time, with the, uh, funding divided up however city manager determines between the different departments.
And a second.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed?
Thank you, Matt.
Next item is discussion and consideration of pay application one for the Walnuts Center Chair.
Um, and I apologize, I got this before the weekend and then before the, but the, the amount's two hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents. If you remember, the overall bid for this project is two hundred and forty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventeen cents, a hundred thousand of which is coming from, um, a grant that we received. So, um, if you have been able to drive back there, the lights are up, they're not operational, and the trail has been paved.
What's that, three?
Yeah, so there is, um, some dirt work. There will be additional dirt work, uh, that I will bring to you, that I would like to see. So at the, the bottom of the basin, just to the north of the LBC, there's, it's grassed over, and you can see two lines of, um, stormwater controls. I asked Rocky to give me a number to take the stormwater, when they take the stormwater controls out, to go ahead and smooth that down and see it all with dormancy for the spring, so that we can potentially mow, um, that area and not be stuck with that LBC. Otherwise, yeah, very happy, uh, progressing. They had a buggy after that, that trailer they did. Probably LBC without the truck and the school.
Did the what?
The buggy.
Oh.
No, no, it's from that truck.
They were able to drive trucks for the half going towards Palisades, and then after that, then they had to use little miniature buggies.
Does it look like fun to your eyes, Chris, to be honest?
Yeah, it was.
I mean, it's a roller.
I know, I know, but there, there's some motor attached, it looks like fun to me. Chris, what was that dollar on again, just in case it comes?
So it was, uh, two hundred thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-two cents.
Anybody else?
And that's just short of, it's like forty-two, like forty-eight or anything?
Right.
I move approval of pay application number one for the Walnuts Center Chair.
I was second.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Next period, next item, discussion and consideration of storm and sanitary sewer work softball field.
Um, so this has been somewhat of a complicated animal because we have, um, both sanitary and storm sewer lines that traverse, uh, underneath the softball, current softball field. Um, the pipes that are in there for both of those are actually in different points of deterioration. So underneath softball complex, the storm sewer pipe looks actually pretty decent. And moving forward, um, they're going to have to potentially resurface or do some, some things with the turf in eight, ten years. We would look at that pipe and, again, in eight, ten years, um, and maybe, uh, probably line it at that point. So that pipe itself has a shelf life that could be anywhere from twenty to thirty years. Once you get outside of what would be the old, um, stand by the batting cage, there's sanitary manhole, um, just to the north where it starts to kind of curve down and go from Seventh and the school property. That manhole is in bad shape and needs to be done. And then the storm sewer, uh, pipe and the two intakes that traverse, it actually is in, on school property at that point. Um, the pipe, the two intakes, and the area on the west side are all in, in really bad shape, so the, the two intakes are shifted. Um, even though it's on school property and there's question marks as to who has easements and whatnot, that storm sewer actually takes a much bigger area into the east. So around the apartment complex, the roads coming, coming in funnels through that storm sewer network and then goes around the north side of the practice field, which means the practice field in the buckhorn. Back along Cornell property and the school, and then makes its way back kind of up and around. So, long story short, we are going to be on the hook for some of those improvements. The school is carrying the contract, obviously, because they're doing it as part of the softball complex. I don't have a definitive number for you. I don't necessarily need a motion, but I did want to get in front of you because we're going to have to make some very quick decisions. But just know that our expense is going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of probably twenty to forty thousand, just depends on, on all of it combined.
So do you need, need an amount to exceed water?
Um, I'd need to just basically know whether the council has extreme concerns with the amount of money that we're talking about. Um, we can do this under the emergency, emergency. Um, you can give me a number not to exceed forty thousand. If it has to go above that, uh, we would let the council mayor know immediately, but I'm, I'm not seeing that number be that high yet. Um, so.
Is there any idea, I mean, do you have an idea when you, when we would have a number?
So I did receive an email today, I just haven't had time to review it. I ship all the emails from, the nice part about it is, uh, Lauren Hoffman from Hall &amp; Hall is who's working on it for the school, Dave Jackinger. So they, they actually contact each other almost daily. Um, and I just think we need to finalize the number. They were getting additional numbers. They only had one contractor that gave them a number because they're going to do the rest now. So they're seeking other contractors to see if they can lower that number. If they can, it's going to be on the higher side closer to the forty thousand. The manhole really is about the only thing that we could potentially work on, but the fact that Nick will be gone here another week and a half, and then the other two person, I mean, I wouldn't want to burden the hard staff, they're trying to get that done in their timeframe, so.
Was it done yet?
And the fact that it's not.
Well, it's not, I mean, yeah.
So to answer your question, Seth, and you can give me a, a not to exceed forty, number, and then I'll just keep the council up as we go. If it happens to be something significantly higher than that, then the council will know about it, I would, I'll start paying.
What's coming up with sewer fund, funding?
Uh, yes. Um, storm sewer, if you remember, we are buying down here, we did, but it's still negative, so.
Yeah, because I know, we just, we just put the extra money into that.
Yes. So the, the thought that I have is, um, if you remember correctly, we borrowed from the sewer plant depreciation fund to buy the PD. That money, a portion of that money is coming back this year once we certify our TIF. Once that money is certified, it will be put back in depreciation and promptly transferred over to sewer. So, um, the reason for that is to keep that money in a depreciation account right now is fairly futile, especially when you're doing improvements, and the money's not going to come anywhere near the dollar amount that you did to make either improvement. So having it sitting over there just gaining interest, it should be a mercy of fun at that point. So I'm okay, I'm comfortable with where we're at. It's just a lot of moving parts, and over the course of the six months, we'll, you're going to have to move some money around, um, to make this, this happen. So.
Hey, Michael?
I'll, I'll go ahead and make the motion, um, for the sanitary and storm sewer work not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
And I'll second.
Call in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Next period, next item, discussion and consideration of North College Boulevard.
I've never heard of that, you know, dealing with this on a lot of my, um.
Sorry, I, I did not have a right of course.
It's because you're leaving.
That's right.
Just, just dumping it on the old system.
This happened to my job, man. I'm sorry, I apologize. Uh, so Cornell is currently replacing about a hundred and forty feet of sanitary, or storm sewer, and, um, the storm sewer was old, you know, needed to be replaced. And if anyone ever drove up North College Boulevard, which would be the street that takes you to Summit, and it kind of connects you to the backside of Cornell there, and there's a lot of.
Parking lots on one, okay.
So the, uh, West Lane slash southbound traffic lane is completely destroyed, and it has been since I've been here. And we've never.
The lane of traffic is, or the storm sewer underneath it?
Where the lane of traffic was. The storm sewer was actually replaced kind of on the parking side, um, just off of our lane. Uh, and it was initially approached to me that we would have to take a third of that lane out, and then they would put that back. And at that time, I asked, I said, well, can we just, if we're taking already a third of one lane, can we just fix the rest of the street? So that didn't happen. They didn't take out a third lane, but they still took out the storm sewer, and they asked if we would still work with them on replacing the, the West Lane. They would prefer the whole street be replaced. Uh, when I went and looked at it, my initial thought is, this lane, the East Lane, work traffic, has been like this also as long as I've been here, and it hasn't, you know, changed what it's doing. So whatever's going on in the West Lane, I attributed a lot of it to the storm sewer, because that storm sewer was, it, there was holes everywhere. Uh, granted, the storm sewer's on the opposite side, but there's some water issues going on. So while the contractors there, they're able to rip it out, and they have a concrete contractor that we've worked with extensively. He's worked on our, uh, new public worksite. He put a pad out there for us for our dump site. And, uh, they gave us a pretty good price, I thought, for removal and put, put at least the westbound traffic lane. And, uh, if we crack seal next year, that eastbound lane will be great. And I'm hoping with Cornell that would eliminate any issues in the, the near future. So just asking if we could move forward with this. Uh, I assume Chris wouldn't have been around in front of you if we couldn't figure out how to fund it somewhere. somewhat, so.
Well, so just so everybody's aware, we're going to utilize franchise fees. The hundred thousand dollars that we had earmarked specifically for the PD, for like a phase one of the center portion of the building, isn't going to occur before July with the RHO and COVID and everything else going on. I disagree that our goal for the remainder of this fiscal year is just to hang on by the teeth and then worry about looking at various options. It's about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to finish that entire center section. I want to be able to analyze from a debt ratio where we're at, we know what we're going to get from the DOT. So there's a number of things that are going to occur here over the course of the next three to four months. And it gives us a chance to find out how much we're going to get from game up on reimbursements as well, so.
When would this work be done if this approved?
This work would occur almost immediately, they're there now, right?
Yeah, they're there now. I have not reached out to them this week to see if they're, you know, still willing to do this. So my guess is profit's still there and that's why we're getting a pretty good removal price. And then Jeremy Gary is putting the concrete back for Cornell.
So what kind of value are we looking at on the work?
Eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Yeah, that's not, I mean, you were asking for four hundred and fifty thousand. More than a sentence of game up here.
We're going to redo Palisades.
Okay. That's a different moment.
The four hundred and fifty thousand for the center high level PD. Instead of doing it over three phases, we might try to do the entire thing and pay for it.
He said a lot with that.
He'd like five hundred thousand.
Also eighteen thousand for the reason.
The hundred thousand that we would not be spending on the franchise fee does allow us to do smaller projects like this.
I didn't know we had that money set in. I could ask for some other things.
This is where he goes. So eighteen-five is what we're looking at for this deal?
Roughly, yes. Eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty.
I would say, if you're asking for a motion tonight, not to exceed about twenty-two-five, but just to be on the six.
Well, in that case, I will move approval of the North College Boulevard improvements not to exceed twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Nick, have you ever been told, girl?
Yes?
Yes, but they never make it.
I was going to say, when the timing gets here.
It doesn't come here and we're ready to go.
The funnel's been pretty tight.
Eldon, no pressure.
Take a note.
The magic's on my information is just, that's what Joey alluded to that I was supposed to have in my council packet, so it's just information purpose, nothing more.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that?
Great efforts.
Yeah, obviously a lot of well thought out work went into it.
Lot, 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 yeah.
I'm impressed.
Okay. Keith, you're up, sir. Mount Vernon's looking forward, anything you want to address or?
Nothing.
The council, unless you got questions? Anybody have any questions? Nick? Then it's your last question.
Nothing on my report. I didn't know if council's officially met Eldon. He's here, so they're just giving him a hi and say, hey, he's going to do a great job filling in, so taking over, so.
Part of the lobby moved in.
I don't know what's going, I gotta get out of here, there's a lot of things going on. Thank you.
Matthew, Mount Vernon, Parks and Earth Department, anything for the council, sir?
Nothing to add, sir.
Anybody have any questions for Matthew? I'll be up on the next item as well.
Glad to see the master trails plan being worked on by Parks and Earth.
Always. Yeah, always. We got two done, now we gotta keep going.
Keep it on then.
Anything else?
No, I'm just approaching for the next item.
Next item is the LBC day camp report. It's not on. Talk loudly.
I'll speak loud, okay?
Does he really need a mic? I mean, come on, Senator.
Hey, this is my moment. I'm up here now. All right, so I have kind of a lot to say, it's right in front of you. We did the best we could with what we had. We offered four sessions, as you can see, the numbers of kids grew as we moved on, papered off a little bit. But we just are not set up for a long-term day camp. We didn't, we didn't set this up for a long-term. We promoted it as a temporary service. We didn't want to end on a negative note, we want to end on a positive note. We had, looked into research opportunities for these families, at least to consider somewhere else to go. And I think we did everything we could to help out the situation, so. Keep in mind, most of, majority of the people that were working in those situations were high school kids. And granted, they did a phenomenal job, but again, they weren't built to do this long-term. And it was taking the toll on some staff from a stress standpoint. And then also, as you know, we're getting into the colder season, we're seeing an influx of people coming into the building, we thought we needed to divert resources more towards the operations of the facility as opposed to the day camp. So with that happening, we didn't want, again, to fizzle out or be a detriment, so that's where we're at, so.
Well, and in my monthly meetings that I have with Dr. Bayton Horace, I mean, the school is extremely, extremely appreciative, very cool, nothing but high, high regard for the program.
And same with the families. We had some great families involved and we had a lot of accolades, a lot of positive comments in regards to what we're doing and kids were looking forward to coming to it. And that was the hardest decision for us, was to say, we can't do it with those families. So it wasn't an easy decision, but it just, I think we just needed to make that decision.
No, I think it's the, I think it's the right choice. It was a great offer and at the right time.
Yeah, and I'm glad that we tried it and I think Dr. Bayton Horace and Doug and Chris, I mean, we're all kind of making this up as we go, because we've never been in a situation like this before. And to have the schools making the decisions they're making and I'm glad that we're, we've got staff and folks who are, let's give this a shot and see what happens. And sometimes it doesn't work, but I would much rather that we take the shot and see how it goes, so thank you for doing it.
Well, thank you. With that said, we know we can do it, that's the best part, we know we can do it, we can do it all day. But our vision really is to do more short-term, do two, three-hour camps, maybe half-day, something like that, down the road, and we do some spring break stuff and some other stuff. Now, summer camp, that might be a whole different story, but that'll be where we have enough time to train. I mean, we only had three to four days to train the staff. And to find those staff, we just took people that currently work for us, hired a few other people that had days off because they were high school students, it was convenient. But, you know, we didn't have any major incidents occur and we had really good, positive times with kids, so.
Good. Kudos to you and your team.
Thank you, Sarah.
Anybody else have any questions? Have you been real?
No, just the other thing was, just to let you know, that one of the things the day camps did do is prove to staff that it's probably time to move to phase three.
Oh, yeah.
Open the rock wall, back up on a limited basis with specific rules. And so we're going to attempt some of those things. As far as controls in the building, there's still limitations on equipment use, how often or how many people can be in a room, so on and so forth. But the rock wall, we're going to require people to sanitize in and sanitize out. As I told Matt, we're probably the only ones in this area right now that hasn't reopened it. And I think that the issue for us is, we've always had a staff person down below helping to get into harnesses, we'll only be operating the two that maintain six feet apart and then, like I said, they have to sanitize them and sanitize up. And one of the things that I'm extremely pleased with is there's Matt and Sarah and the staff and the ability to maintain control, even with the kids that were there, contractors coming in and out too. I said, it's time to move on forward and we'll see how it looks.
I know that's something that's been asked for quite a bit, correct? Because the rock wall, the whole thing.
Is the, is the move from a hundred and ten capacity to, I think it was two fifty, is that mostly rental-based? Or do we have actual attendance that?
It's both. We've seen an influx of people coming in, utilizing the facility and also rentals are pushing that number. Matt, we're going, you know, we're getting to colder months, I mean, it's inevitable that there's going to be more people coming, we're seeing people, more people unfreezing their memberships, we're seeing daily admissions, one-month and three-month memberships being sold. We're not seeing a lot of annuals and so forth right now, but again, there's a lot of uncertainty still out there, so I can't blame them. But we are seeing a lot of people unfreezing their memberships, so I just had some numbers, if you don't mind, just going at you, just so you can kind of see where we're at. I wish I could print this out for you earlier and I didn't, but just to give you an idea, back on March sixteenth, when we closed, we had forty-eight one-month memberships, now we have twenty. We had three-month memberships, we're a hundred and thirty-one, we have fifty. And this is as of today. Twelve-month EFTs, this is without the corprits, we had sixty-six, now we have fifty-four. Twelve-month paid-in fulls, one hundred and fifty-six, on March sixteenth, we have a hundred and twenty-eight, we're not far off from some of that. And that goes to say that there's a hundred and thirty-three still-frozen memberships right now. And a little over half of those are families, so give you an idea of what we're looking at for those people. And so several reasons why those people are still frozen is, one, the rock wall, two, kids programming and the kids' fun activities that we have, they just can't work out if they can't bring their kids. And so we stopped offering that program and so they stopped coming. So we're looking at adding those two things that will bring, I think, more people into the building, which should still follow our rules and our guidelines, and we'll still try and maintain the most safe possible places we can.
I think it's key to note that the two fifty that we've arrived at though is still less than half of the capacity, so we're still, still operating well under the guidelines established by the state and at a number that we feel manageable with staff.
Matt, with our current software or whatnot, do we have the ability to reach out and let those hundred and thirty know that these are changing and things are happening up?
So what we thought we would do, if it's okay with councils, we would go ahead and go into phase three on November first. We would go through thirty days of phase three and see how everything goes with that. And then come December first, we would reach out to everybody, well, before that, but we would reach out and shoot for a target date, December first or January first, whichever we prefer, to allowing people to make those decisions, whether they unfreeze their memberships or they can cancel at that time. We have to get, we're kind of, we're stuck in hard place. Because right now, everybody's membership that has been frozen now goes until roughly August of next year. Okay, following? So we have no new revenue coming in until August of next year. If we continue down until legal's frozen all the way till January, then we're looking at October. That's a good month to have people renew their memberships. If we keep going further into, and we get to February, March, that's a tough time of the year to do that, because they're making a decision, well, I'm not going to use it February, March, and so they may not renew, so.
Yeah, I was going to say, January.
And also, and also holiday break. And having some kids do.
Yeah, we're finding that there's a lot more people coming in saying, you know, what can we do, what can't we do? And when we say the rock wall is one thing you can't do, and you see the faces, a little disappointment, you know. So I think we have a safe way of doing it, it's not going to, there's still going to be probably people unhappy with not being able to get on the rock wall because we're only allowing two climbers at a time, we're scheduling the times so that it's going to be operational. It's still going to be a little bit of a catch-22, but it still will be a light ahead of the tunnel that they can see an opportunity that we're opening up some more doors.
That's a great idea.
Couple of observations. About every other time I'm there, I see somebody getting a tour, so there's always people doing tour and they're people I don't recognize, so that's good. Second thing is, I see in the parking area, more Lynn County, more Sola, Cedar Rapids plates and Johnson County, things like that, all plates from outside the community and the people in the facility that I don't recognize. And there just seems to be more traffic in general, you know, since it's picked up in the last month or so, so. And then odd different times and so on, and I think rentals are up and, you know, more basketball teams are practicing and so on, so it's good to see more activity.
I was just there this morning and I was really impressed that, you know, they've got very clear signage, every other machine, and it's also humorous, so good job, Matt. You entertain them at the same time. But anyway, I just felt like people were being, that I saw were really respectful, people really doing a good job of wiping down before and after they were using the equipment. I mean, that's just good to see, it makes me feel better about going to phase three.
And I think our staff are doing a great job keeping up with cleaning. We slowed down a little bit just because we don't need to be hovering over people, you know, but we're still taking advantage of the opportunity having some people during the day to just generally clean everything, handles and railings and just general stuff. And the allocations are doing a good job cleaning the equipment, so we'll just continue to do that, make the saves we can.
Class participation's up, I mean, the whole sector's had a more in test program, you know, that's unique and a lot of people don't know that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Rentals is right now the thing that we're seeing influx in. And not just basketball courts, but, you know, people now want to do birthday parties, they want to do some baby showers, so we're seeing that. And that's what, you know, if we have a maximum of fifty right now in rentals, if we have two spaces being rented and not, everybody's going to put fifty people on a basketball court, but if you rent all three basketball courts, you could have forty-five, you could have, you know, a hundred and fifty people here, then we reach that number, so that's why we're looking to increase in that number.
Any events coming up that we close down the facility, like we did for that volleyball tournament in September?
There's been a small conversation about a wrestling tournament coming in, but nothing's been solid. We haven't worked out details on that either, so, you know, we are purchasing a wrestling mat and that'll be about six weeks away right now, or have it. But that's not going to be the only mat that would be in the building for that type of situation. But that's something we just have to weigh in and see when it is and so forth, but keep in mind that that's young kids, we just touched on the surface, that's all.
Good. Thanks, Matt, I think you have, I think you have what you need, sir.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. Oh, just really quick, just a side note, I want to make sure everybody understands this, because it's been one, that's one other point of contention that Phil's had, is we are continuing with the current age requirements that we have in place right now, just because, well, one, the school going back full-time in January will help with this, but we felt that if we allow eleven-year-olds like we did before in our building, if those kids are on alternate days, we can have some eleven-year-olds coming into our building, we felt like that we don't, we aren't staff to babysit them if we will or.
That's what it would turn into.
Like it was, so we didn't want it to turn into a daycare. So just so you know, we're keeping the ages right now until possibly January first, that's our call.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, move on to reports, anything from council committee, anybody have anything to share? Chris, anything to highlight from here?
No, Pat here and I think what Laura, maybe you guys go ahead and Karen, you can get set up, take a quick break and relax it up.
All right, sounds good. Anybody else have anything, any other comments? All right, on to the business.